Thank you. Apologize for the late start. Um, so we'll get right into business. This is, uh, Healy Wilkoff, please.
Linda Avanzato. Gregory Blaschke.
Here.
Larry Cerisi.
Here.
Cheryl Clarkin. Bob Jones.
Here.
Julia Hell. Student representative. Thank you. On Wednesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen, they will be a facility self-committing meeting at four P. M. At the Central Administration Building. Monday, January nineteenth, Martin Luther King Day, schools and offices are closed. Tuesday, January twenty-seventh, School Committee Business Meeting, seven P. M., North Kingston High School. Friday, January thirtieth, Professional Development Day, no school for students.
Thank you, uh, Mrs. Healy. Just a reminder to everyone, uh, if you'd like to speak during the Citizens' Comments portion of tonight's meeting, which will be immediately following, uh, the two presentations that we have on tonight's agenda, the sign-up sheet is located right up here, uh, up front on the stage, so now would be the time to sign up if you wish to speak during that portion of the meeting. Only those that have signed up will be, um, called to speak. So please, if you'd like to speak, be sure to sign up. First presentation this evening is the, uh, by Dr. Humbert, is the two thousand and fourteen NECAP Science Presentation. Uh, there'll be a brief presentation on that. Uh, and, and following, we'll have, uh, quick, uh, Q. And A. With committee members, um, if there are any questions. Thank you, Dr. Humbert.
Thank you, Mr. Cerisi. Good evening, everyone. And so we had our NECAP release. Uh, as you probably remember, the, uh, NECAP scores were embargoed, um, because there was a little bit of, um, concern over some of the reporting. And so we finally have the results, and I'm going to go through our district results with through this presentation. So the test is based on the administration from last May. Um, so it was done in the, in the spring of two thousand and fourteen. We had nine hundred and thirty-five students who participated in it, and, uh, through the state, we had almost thirty-one thousand students who took it. This test is only, only administered in grades, uh, four, eight, and eleven. And so it, um, assesses basically the content and, uh, and skills that students have learned through the end of the tested grade. So there's grade spans from K. To four, from five to eight, and from nine to eleven. We have multiple choice questions and constructed response questions and inquiry task items. The inquiry task items were the items that were of concern in this particular test results session. And, uh, the topics are Earth and Space Science, Physical Science, and Life Sciences. So here we see the trends for each of our levels, for the elementary level from two thousand and eleven. If you can't see this screen, I'll just read them across. In two thousand and eleven, it was sixty-two percent. This is grade four. As a district, we went to sixty-three percent, then sixty-four percent, and we've jumped, um, eight percentage points up to seventy-two percent for this last set of results. For eighth grade, we were at fifty-seven percent, took a little dip to fifty-four, went back to fifty-seven, and we had a decrease this, this time to forty-two percent. I will show you overall that we have experienced growth in the long, uh, term, but we had a decrease which was very disappointing to us, um, but not unlike those results from the rest of the state. And then grade eleven, we had outstanding results. We started in two thousand and eleven with thirty percent, went up to forty-one percent and maintained forty-one percent, and then went up to fifty-five percent this time, uh, which is, you can see, is an increase of fourteen percent. So kudos to the, uh, Science Department and the students, hard-working students from the high school. Five of our eight schools maintained or increased levels of proficiency. So we had significant gains. I do want to say, these are not necessarily statistically significant gains, that's a, there's a difference there, but these are percentage point gains. So for, at Fishing Cove, we went from forty-seven percent last year to sixty-nine percent this year. Forest Park was at thirty-nine last year, went up to sixty-six, which is generally where they were trending previously. Uh, they had maintained in the sixty percent, uh, percentage range for quite a while. Last year, they had an off year, um, but they did bring that back. And Quineset went from seventy percent to seventy-seven percent, and I do want to note to everybody that Quineset is our highest-performing elementary school in science for this, uh, this, these results. And once again, the high school results are listed. So we had a distinction. The distinction was actually pointed out and highlighted by Commissioner Gist, and, uh, it is this, that North Kingston High School was one of four Rhode Island high schools that performed significantly higher than last year. So there were only four high schools, and actually, I think, four schools, well, no, probably not, I think it's four high schools, that actually showed an increase, and was one of two that also made significant gains since two thousand and eight. So comparing the district and state results over the four-year trend, you see the state is averaging around thirty-two percent, the low, low thirties, and you see our results, which we've already discussed, broken out there. And, uh, then for North Kingston as a district, from two thousand and eight, we were at thirty-seven percent, and then our current district reporting is at fifty-six percent. So we're from, over that time period, we've shown an increase of nineteen percent, a positive increase, well, an increase, I guess, is positive. We've shown an increase of nineteen percent. So that, this is what you're looking for, for, over the long term. It's important. At the elementary level, you can see the state is averaging in the forties. Uh, we were in the sixties, and now up to seventy-two percent, so we have broken into the seventies, and overall, that's a fifteen percent increase since two thousand and eight. So for the middle school, here's where you see that decline again, um, from fifty-seven percent to forty-two percent, which is a fifteen percent decline. However, if you look at two thousand and eight to two thousand and fourteen, overall, we've had an increase of twelve percent. So it's, it does give us some consolation and some hope, and we, uh, confidence that we're doing things right, um, just that this test has a few issues with it. And there are the high school, um, results again, but this is compared against the state. So you can see the state is averaging, uh, high, they started high twenties, they're in the low range, actually, at thirty, uh, percent, and, uh, we are up at fifty-five percent, and we have had a twenty-nine percent increase from two thousand and eight. Started at twenty-six percent proficiency and up to fifty-five percent proficiency. So another outstanding piece of data. Okay, so, uh, here's, here's what happened. When the results came out, I know I was one of the first ones to, probably, to call Ride because I checked in right as they came out, and I noticed what happened at the middle level, and so I called, um, someone at, at Ride that handles the science test and said, you know, is it, can you tell me, is this happening in other places, or are we the only ones? And so he said he would get back to me, and as the day went on, I guess more calls came in, and, um, students who are traditionally very high-performing students were scoring, um, very low on this particular test. So that raised some concerns, and shortly thereafter, the test's results were embargoed. Um, so that, well, they were already embargoed, but they weren't released. The embargo was extended. So based on these concerns, Ride authorized an examination of the results. A review of all aspects of the assessment indicated that the scoring and the data processing protocols were followed with fidelity. The grade eleven results are accurate at all levels. Grade four and five results are accurate at the state level and should be interpreted with caution at the district or school level. So in the grade four, we saw an, actually, an increase, but other, the other districts did not at the elementary level. Schools with small numbers of students below a hundred should always look at changes in scores with caution, and particularly with the science test, there are less items on the science test than there are on our reading. We don't have as many sessions, we don't have as many, uh, questions, and so, um, it, there is more fluctuation generally with the science test than, than with the reading and math tests. So this caution, uh, of, you know, the caution that I just read about is offered due to two inquiry task items at grade four and two inquiry task items at grade eight. This was question six and question eight of the inquiry tasks, uh, for both levels, I think it was, but for, definitely for eighth grade. The caution is offered because of how the items were worded and because of how strictly interpreted the scoring was to assign scores above a zero. Both of these issues will be addressed in the development and scoring of the two thousand and fifteen NECAP Inquiry Tasks, so next year. And a letter will be sent, well, was sent to parents by Ride, uh, that came, accompanied the student reports. So most of the reports went out on Friday, some went out, um, on Monday of this week, and they should have a letter with them explaining everything that, uh, basically that happened. So there are some questions that this raises. Well, if everybody got zeros, and there were a high number of students who received zeros, over sixty percent in our middle schools, um, who received a zero, particularly on item eight. Um, so if there were so many zeros, then why not throw out those questions? And so the answer to that is, after all these reviews, is that if you threw them out, uh, first of all, it makes the test less difficult, but also, the students that did score proficiently on those items would also be hurt by doing that. And then when they looked at it, the difference between a zero and a one, to get partial credit, to get a one, um, there weren't that many students that it involved. And also, when you do that and, and raise a point, you're only raising a raw score point, so it doesn't translate into actually raising a whole level, like proficient to, you know, proficient with distinction, or, you know, any of the one, two, three, four categories. So basically, um, they're just cautioning that people should just, um, schools should look at the items and see where there might be gaps in the instruction, uh, take a look at the sample items that they've given us for responses. And I have the actual question eight to, that I'd like to give to you, and you can see, um, two sample responses and how much information the students provided, but it was determined, the information was accurate that they provided, but was irrelevant to the skill and content that they were looking for. Uh, and that's how the rubric reads. So, uh, it's very interesting to, to hear a response and, uh, realize, you know, the students put in a lot of effort into, into that, and you would think that it would even be partial credit, uh, but it wasn't. It was, uh, it was very strictly enforced, and so the, the zeros resulted. So for us, we'll continue our school-level analysis. I just sent something out to the principals today, so they can pull with that to their departments. Um, everything is available on the Ride website at this point, all the released items, et cetera. And Dr. Ojay and I are going to a GemsNet central office meeting, uh, shortly, I think, next, next week, and we will, uh, be discussing our results with the other districts. We're going to continue our curriculum revision. We're in the middle of, um, doing reviews now as we transition to the NGSS, the New Generation State Standards, uh, and we're going to continue to integrate the Common Core State Standards, particularly with writing, responses, uh, to text, and using evidence. That ends the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much, uh, Dr. Humbert. Uh, start, uh, at the end of the table and work our way.
Okay. Um, although you mentioned you'd give us question eight, can you just very quickly, if you can, describe, you know, what type of question that was and what you mean by an inquiry task? I'm not an expert on the, the task.
Right, so the inquiry task can be an experiment, um, which it was at the fourth-grade level, or it can be an analysis of data. And for the eighth grade, it was, the eighth grade, it was analysis of data.
Thank you.
Well, I have the test here. So I think it's, if you don't mind, if you'll indulge him for a minute, it is worth hearing. Uh, if you don't, are you curious? Okay. So here's task, um, eight. This is how the question, so students had data to analyze. And so the question reads, "Describe how the students can make sure that the information they collect from future population surveys will provide the information they need to help them test their predictions. Explain your answer." Then in parentheses, it has hint, "Think about good experimental techniques." So students, I think, saw experimental techniques and went into describing the scientific method. And so there was a, a very elaborate response, and there's two examples of extremely elaborate responses going into the scientific method, but they didn't feel in, uh, in either case that the students had provided relevant information. So, and I will, I will give you the, the responses. And one, in one of the cases, it, she describes the, or he or she describes the entire scientific method. In the next one, um, she talks about, uh, doing, uh, doing repeated, um, data collection, but she indicates that it would be done a couple of times a, a day, and they feel the response wasn't, um, adequate because, uh, the controlling variable should have said that these, uh, it was spread out over a period of time. So it still wasn't partial, though, you know? I mean, she indicated the collection data being more than once, and, uh, and still got a zero.
Thank you.
I am thinking.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Dr. Humbert.
You're welcome.
I'm curious if there's been feedback from Ride about the perception that this sort of, well, it's not really valid at the individual local school level, but it's okay, it's, it's okay at the aggregate level, you know? It's sort of like saying, you know, every left fielder is bad, but don't worry, left-field play in general is, is good. I, I'm curious whether, how Ride is going to address that this sort of puts a, a cloud over when we want to move to things like the part assessment. I know we're going to stay with the NECAP for science.
Right.
You know, to, to just reinforce the perception that, um, this form of NECAP assessment is still going to be, um, perceived anyways as, as useful and valid. I'm, I'm really concerned that it, it strikes me as almost being lazy by Ride, um, that they can't go back and say, "Here's your adjusted score," even if it's incrementally different. I mean, students want to know their correct score, and if the question really is determined not to be valid, or was scored not correctly, or there was such gross interpretation of the question to render it as giving such a wide variance, I'm just a little perplexed why Ride wants to sort of hand-wave this and go, "It's okay at the state level, but we have to send a letter to parents to say, 'Put a cloud in your mind about the whole thing.'" And I know that's not, you know, your thing, or-
No, we don't have any control over that.
-or Dr. Ojay's control over that, but I'm just sort of curious, what, you know, does Ride have any intent to sort of do more than just go, "Oops?"
Not with this release, no. Um, and, and, you know, many people questioned that, um, because when you're dealing with thirty thousand, um, you know, with the margin of error, et cetera, you know, that, that the results at the state level are a, a little more solid than when you're dealing with the smaller numbers. So, um, and like I said, the reasons, some of the reasons they gave was that if, you know, I mean, they could have adjusted some of those scores, but they, they really felt that though it was stringent and, um, it was stringent scoring, that the scoring according to the rubric was actually correct. So they went over and, you know, and, and looked, uh, looked at that, they did equating, um, so they looked at items that they keep consistent from year to year, and our students did more poorly this year than they did last year. Um, so, you know, and New Hampshire and Vermont had released their scores, and those went public as well. So I think there's a lot of factors in there, and, um, that's as far as I can take it for an explanation. Mr. Jones?
Did you look at our middle school scores compared to the local charter school scores?
No, the, the data files that I have, I don't have access to, um-
Right, but didn't, did Ride post a discourse?
Oh, at the aggregate scores.
Yeah, at the aggregate level.
Um, no, I did not.
Because I, I think we'll find that our middle schools significantly outperformed, um, the eighth grade at our local charter school.
But I have access to that this evening, so I could confirm that.
So, um, and it's good to see, um, that, I know we're across the state, um, thing, but i- is there any sharing, um, and I know it's, it's highly variable, but, you know, looking at interest school scores, you know, what maybe is going on at Quineset versus the other schools, um, in terms of sharing practices that are going on? I mean, it's very good news that Quineset's scores were, were like that, um, and the district as a whole, but I'm just wondering, um, you know, what kind of practices may be being shared among, among our, our schools?
Right, and so, and so last year, we, I did visit Quineset and said, you know, "What are you doing?" Because the scores keep just, just keep going up, and, um, I, I don't know if I shared with you some of the things that they're doing, but they do a lot of integrated projects, and mo- many of their integrated projects include science. Like, for example, they'll do a whole recycling project and bring in all of the science strategies. And I think, uh, I think that goes on continuously through the school each year, and so the students are reinforcing their investigative skills and their analysis skills. So I think that's one of the main things that we're seeing there, and I have shared that with the other principals.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Ojay?
I just want to, uh, on the point that Mr. Jones talked about, you know, I'm, I'm very proud of these scores. I know the middle school, um, had a hit, but I don't necessarily, um, see that as a regular trending kind of thing. If you look at the long term, um, the scores at the middle school have been some of the highest in the state. In fact, we had a rally in here a couple of years ago where both Davisville and Wickford and, uh, the Jamestown, uh, Long School, Sending School were, all three of those schools were in the top five schools in the state for their science scores. And that's, uh, are those kids now in eleventh grade? I'm not sure if they're the eleventh graders now or the tenth graders, but, um, you know, the, the point here that, you know, right now, I mean, we're getting a lot of, um, praise at Quineset. The GemsNet people see it, and they have asked Gem, uh, Quineset, I was recently a part of a, of a, um, a learning tour there with Dr. Humbert, where we had people from other schools come in and, and learn about, you know, what's going on. I think Mr. Blaschke, you were part of that as well, um, learning about, seeing the kids in action with science. We have, um, Mr. Ferrario, we have another teacher who's on loan to GemsNet right now, uh, people who have been, you know, part of their program, part of their training. So we have a really good network of people and a really tremendous quality program. We spend a good deal of money on this program, and we get all the materials that we need and mandatory training for everyone involved, and it, and you can see it's paying off. We've been having good scores at the elementary level for some years now, and the last few, the middle school scores have been racing up, and we're seeing with the changes being made at the high school, um, to do more with physical science, for instance, in ninth grade, and to really, you know, look at those tests and see what's being tested and, and adjust our curriculum to meet it, that we're seeing huge results at the high school now. That, that to me is the way it's supposed to be, that you're supposed to, you know, continually learn about, you know, work with what's being assessed, and, you know, and fine-tune what you're doing to continually try to get better. And so I, I couldn't be more proud of, of every level, um, because I know the long-term results are that it's going up and to the right on these charts, and, and so it's looking really good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ojay. Just, uh, very quickly, just, thank you, Dr. Humbert, for the presentation. Obviously, we would, you know, love to see everyone proficient, but we are trending in the right direction, and hopefully that continues, and, you know, thank you to the administrators and the teachers and support staff out at the schools, and I think for their hard work, and, uh, more importantly, for the students, to the students for their hard work. So, um, it's, uh, really nice to see, so. Fortunately, I didn't take the, uh, NECAP scores, NECAP test, because I really would have dragged your averages down had I taken the test, but, thank you. Next up, uh, the presentation we have is Program of Studies for the two thousand and fifteen, sixteen year by Dr. Denise Mansiri. And, uh, again, I just want to remind the audience, for anyone who may have come in late, immediately following her presentation, we'll move into Citizens' Comments, so if you'd like to speak at that time, please be sure to sign up right up front here on the sign-in sheet. Thank you. Dr. Mansiri, thank you.
Hello. There's my voice. Okay. Good evening. I do not have a formal presentation with a PowerPoint. I had told that to Amy. I just, uh, sent in the Program of Studies with the changes that we created this year. It, there's, uh, nothing significantly changed, uh, that's different. We have a section that we decided to put all the AP classes together, the Advanced Placement classes together, to help the students and the parents, um, be able to find all the AP classes in one area, so to help them with their scheduling. And then also, the Engineering and the Robotics Program, uh, we put that in an area because we are currently, uh, filling, in the process right now, uh, filling out the application to be a Career in Tech program, uh, through Ride. So I am providing narrative and evidence for all their seven standards and their sub-standards below that. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. I think that you received the draft copy, and they also, the areas that we changed, different pages and what we changed. I did have some email communication with Mr. Jones, and I certainly can, you know, speak to any of your questions, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Dr. Mansiri. I just want to make one quick comment before we open up to, um, question, the Q. And A. You know, the course of studies offerings is, you know, I, I like to compare it to much like a, a menu at the restaurant, at a restaurant, although it may be on the menu, we may not be able to offer or, or serve, serve up that item. And a lot of that is predicated on a course, uh, budget, which we'll be getting into, uh, over the next, uh, month.
Right.
As well as enrollment numbers, uh, and lack of, uh, or, uh, particular more interest or less interest in, in different areas, uh, electives and so on and so forth. So I think, you know, to caution the, mm, committee members and the public as well, that just because something is on the course of studies doesn't guarantee that it's going to be offered.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you. I'll work this way this time. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I, I'm wondering, Nate, that there's loop, I mean, it is a topic item later, um, on our consent and approval. I don't know if there's any citizens who want to speak to the Program of Study, uh, help us, um, so maybe, I don't know if it's to defer some of this to that discussion, or?
We can, we'll do the presentation now, and, um, when we come to that agenda item, we'll take a vote. That way, if any citizens would like to comment prior to an, an actual vote taken, they'll, they'll have an opportunity, and I'm sure Dr. Mansiri will be happy to sit here and wait.
Always, always good for our conversation.
In case there's any questions, so, thank you.
So thank you. Um, just for, I think I appreciate, we, we did have a little bit of discourse, um, on this, and so, um, I'd like to sort of focus on the main, my main area regarding the Program of Study, and that's really focusing on what I see as some of the limitations in the Program of Studies. As you noted, there's not a lot of substantive changes in terms of either courses or, or thing, and, and one of the things I'd like to perhaps encourage is that our Program of Studies is forward-looking in terms of how we're changing our pedagogical approaches, how we need to change sort of maybe our own thinking of what constitutes credit, how we need to change some of our thinking of where our students get educated, how they get educated, um, and their progression along, um, their educational path. It's a constant irritation to me for something, having a discussion with Ride about the physical education curriculum, um, for example, that there seems to be very little flexibility in terms of recognizing that our students perhaps get physical education in, in a variety of ways, um, that maybe should count towards their physical education, um, curriculum. But that said, um, one of the things I want to focus on is things like, um, senior year. So our discussion we had of why does, um, there have to be certain restrictions in terms of the number of credits that must be done senior year, the number of CCAs that seem to be- extent that we can start to engage in a conversation about, um, thinking more broadly, that it's about achieving standards, um, and not about specific time.
Is that a period? Or is that a question?
Yeah, a little of both. Since you already, since you already got my comments.
Absolutely, and I would, I would just like to add to that, that, um, I really think that the people involved in making decisions and looking at the Program of Studies certainly look at that with, uh, the children in mind, and while I agree a hundred percent that there should be opportunities, I, I, I would, I would tread with caution, just because we don't want to become the Wild West either. We've, we've gone down that road before with internships, and we had to corral quite a few people back, uh, when they were having, um, let's just say, less than fabulous internships that wouldn't have hit any of the standards. So we had to rein that in, so while I don't want to be on one end of the pendulum, I certainly don't want to be on the other. And I think what we need to have is some really great dialogue, uh, coming up to try to plan, and I think just having our school improvement team together and having those four different areas with the graduation, and we're looking at communications and technology and the whole child, and I think what that does is it opens up, if we're looking at, uh, professional development, or we're looking at new classes, and we're going through, always looking at the school improvement plan, we certainly have room there to, I think, go to the edges. And I, I had a PD back in November that I wasn't at, and one of the things that I asked the, the teachers to do is to look, to take our students to the edges. And so I definitely agree that there's room for that, but I'd like to be able to do that in a strategic manner.
Thank you. Okay, so a little more, so, then maybe to be a little more specific, if a student can achieve their math, four math things by junior year, why must there be a math thing in their senior year? What's the rationale for it must be in their senior year?
If I, if I may, um, this has also been a peep of mine, Mr. Jones, as I mentioned to you today. Um, I, I agree with you that there are certain things that, um, for math credits, I'm all for it, I don't necessarily feel that one of them has to happen in the senior year. I know I get a little bit of pushback from some of the members of the Guidance Department on that one, but, um, but, uh, we can work through this, I'm sure. But I, I'm all for, and I know, uh, Dr. Mancieri is as well, uh, looking at those kinds of things, um, looking at, you know, the way we do internships as well. I, I just want you to know that we currently have over fifty students that go on internships. We have a good program that works with Period Five, it's the one period that meets every day, so it's nice that we have a period that meets every day to make that work, uh, because that's what the employers want, and it allows students to stick around after school if it works out with that employer. Um, so it's a really nice thing. Uh, we also have the Dual Enrollment Program, um, and I know that we have a lot of creative people in the front office that if a student comes and says, you know, I want to do a good part of my program, my senior year at this or that college, or this or that, uh, kind of, uh, training program, um, and, you know, I'd like to talk to someone about how that would translate to credits, I mean, we're going to work with them. Um, and maybe that needs to be a little bit more documented in the Program of Studies, that we have those kinds of, um, possibilities, but, um, they're there, and there are students currently taking advantage of those kinds of things, so, um, so, you know, we can, we can look at that more as we go forward and, you know, include you in the conversation.
Thank you, Dr. Roger. Mr. Glassball?
Uh, I just want to say, um, my children happen to be younger, so my experience is not so much with the high school, so, uh, reading through this was, uh, an eye-opener for me, um, and I was just really impressed. For years, I've been hearing about the, you know, wonderful opportunities that we have for electives and advanced placement courses, and, um, I mentioned it, Dr. Roger, in a conversation we had, that, to me, reading this almost seemed more like reading a junior college course catalog than a high school.
Thank you.
And I, I want to commend and I'm very proud of the fact that we have the, you know, the breadth of offerings that we do have. Um, so, uh, it, it was very interesting for me to read through and see everything that we can do. And, uh, sort of mirroring a little what, uh, Mr. Jones was saying, and I, I'm sure it happens in advisory and, and with the, um, uh, guidance counselors and things, um, it, I think it's important to, right, remember that we have, you know, different tracks that the students are going to be on, not everyone is going to be going to a, a four-year college, not everyone is, uh, going to be, uh, doing that, and I think, I think we have a reasonably good, um, breadth of, uh, opportunities for those kids who aren't going to go that route. And, uh, one thing I didn't really see was something that sort of says, you know, it, it doesn't break down that way quite as much as I think maybe it should, where you talk about, you know, these are, you know, your suggestions for these classes, if you're doing this or that, or, or things, and maybe comes in the advisory a little bit more.
So, did you see the, the pathways page?
Yes, I did, yeah.
Okay, all right, because that does, that does give the, the tracks or the pathways there, and then also, again, we're, we're filling out the application for RIDE, for the Career in Tech.
Right, the robotics, right.
So I think that's a great step in the right direction.
And that does, that, that very much does what I'm talking about, but, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Dr. Roger.
On that point, I, I just want to make it clear to everyone, I, I know we discussed this before on the stage, but it's worth repeating, you know, over the course of the year, um, in the past two years, um, we have received a, a great deal of grant funding from RIDE. They're very interested in promoting what they see as a high-need industry in Rhode Island, and that is engineering and robotics, and they felt right from the beginning, because of some of the coursework that's already been offered in North Kingston High School, that this was a very good school to, um, invest in for that program. We have, uh, with, um, you know, district funds and grant funds, um, done a tremendous job at renewing, um, a couple of rooms here behind the auditorium, and, um, and have created business partnerships with, with businesses from Quonset and other places in Rhode Island, and we're really building a tremendous program. And this month, um, the Department of Education put us on kind of a fast-track program, they picked certain programs around the state that they really want to invest in, and they allowed us to kind of go outside of their regular parameters and apply for Career in Tech status right now. And I know that occupies a great deal of Dr. Mancieri's day, uh, filling out that application, and I very much appreciate it. I know there's a lot of work going into that from a number of people. Um, and, uh, so, things are looking very good, and that, that, I think is probably this year's most noteworthy addition to, you know, the Program of Studies, the building up of that program, and, uh, one of the, the courses that is going to be new is a precision measurement course, and that is made for these students to have things like OSHA requirements and that sort of thing, so they are ready for an internship, which brings it back to that point, um, that the, the business partners have told us that if, if they have this particular curriculum, we feel very comfortable inviting them right onto our shop floor, and we can kind of take things from there with them. So, um, so all the elements are, are getting in place, and hopefully by the end of the spring, I'll be able to report that we have indeed received a Career in Tech status, uh, at, back at North Kingston High School, so, very happy about that.
Thank you, Dr. Roger. I don't want to get too few.
No, I'm, I'm good. Um, thank you. Um, Mr. Tracy, um, and either Dr. Mancieri or Dr. Zake can, I think, speak to this. Um, I think it's important for the public to know in the Program of Studies that we've eliminated German One, um, and, um...
We're teaching it, and we're doing a teach-out of German One, so that will no longer, the students at Wickford Middle School, Davisville, Jamestown, and any transfer students that come in, uh, German One will not be offered next year, and anybody that's currently in German One will have the opportunity to take Level Two, Three, or Four.
And perhaps, this maybe Dr. Zake can speak to a little, because it seems to me this is a perfect opportunity when the state talks about dual enrollment and partnerships, um, that a school like URI, which is, has noted for having an international engineering program, um, and has discussed about North Kingston being a source of German students, um, it seems to me here's where we get a little bit of feeling from our higher education, state higher education folks, um, that this would be a perfect opportunity to form a partnership with us to save the, the capability to do this, and yet it seems like it's very problematic for them to, um, partner with us. Is that an accurate reflection, Dr. Roger?
Yeah, um, I think probably a little bit more so, it's been difficult on the engineering front than on the foreign language front, but, um, originally, as you recall, we were trying to kind of join the two in following the international engineering program. We still would see that as a, a really nice goal for a student that are in the engineering program to couple that with a robust curriculum with a foreign language, um, and to talk to URI, um, but, uh, as of yet, there's no real, um, you know, kind of articulation agreement, uh, with URI on that issue, yeah.
Um, and it seems to me with a, a new governor and administration that talks about jobs, 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 and a, um, a wonderful Quonset Park and, and engineering and other businesses that are down there, that, uh, this would be an excellent partnership opportunity. So it's a bit disappointing that, um, the folks at URI and our state higher ed, um, folks maybe can't seem to work a little harder to, um, to partner with us, because I, I believe we are more than willing, um, to partner with them on that kind of stuff. Um, I, I did want to just, uh, carry on one more point to, um, Dr. Mancieri.
Yes.
Sort of getting to this, which is, um, maybe relates a bit to what Dr. Zake was saying. Um, I hope, I guess I hope with our Program of Study that we are going to build in perhaps a little flexibility. Uh, I'm still concerned why it, a senior has to have five credits in order to walk across the stage.
Mm-hmm.
It may be a rare case, but I hope we're not, um, penalizing those who, for whatever reason, take a little longer and complete credits at different progression, or those who at some point may be able to obtain much more credit sooner, um, and only require two or three credits, and we can afford them the opportunity to pursue other passions. So, I, I just hope, again, we're sort of not looking at these as hard and fast, but sort of general progression standards, um, and that we, we always keep in mind that there'll be some outliers that, um, we should try and accommodate for in the future.
Well, I would just like to add to that, that we, I use, often I use response-to-intervention lingo with many of the people that I work with, but eighty-five percent of the students are going to fit in very nicely, but we're going to meet about fifteen percent of the people on any given day that needs some kind of extra help, or needs to do something differently, and when we approach it that way, we usually always can accommodate anybody. And so I would just say if somebody walked up to me, and if somebody did walk up to me actually from the robotics class the other day, and they asked to do something special this year, and there's a couple of things that, uh, for next year, uh, for the semester coming up, that are in the way, so we're looking at trying to move those things out of the way, so we can see what we can do about doing it. So we never say no, we look at, at, uh, the possibility in front of us, we look at what they, what they want to do, and we go from there. But I definitely know that it's not advertised well, because sometimes we don't awful, you know, also want the students that would take advantage and take two classes and then go home and sit down on the couch, because that's not doing any good either. So I think if we have somebody that has some great opportunity at a college locally, or, or a great job, and we took a look at it, and we could line it up, and we could do a crosswalk and make sure all the standards were there, I think that we'd be able to do something for them. But I, I, I definitely know that we do not have that written in the Program of Studies, and that something needs to be done, but I'd like to meet somewhere in the middle.
Thank you, Dr. Mancieri. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, we're going to just hop out of order here for a quick second, um, we're going to go to the superintendent's report, uh, and then to citizens' comments. Uh, superintendent will be reporting on the, uh, 2015-16 school calendar, and I know some citizens' questions or comments may revolve around that, so hopefully, uh, given the superintendent an opportunity to prevent, uh, present first, might answer some of those questions and, and comments.
Thank you.
And then immediately following, we'll move into citizens' comments.
Thank you. Um, I, I wanted to use this opportunity, there will not be a vote on this tonight, it's not necessarily a voting, uh, item, uh, but we wanted to have, um, a, a good discussion, uh, with the community about the calendar. This could be kind of a significant move, a little bit more significant than what is usually done year to year, certainly. Um, and I want to give people a little, um, background on this issue. Um, as, uh, many of you know, uh, probably everyone in the audience knows, um, there have been a couple of surveys sent out this, this fall, and that is in response to, uh, the Superintendent's Association. They are the association that usually is the one to recommend to school committees what the state, uh, calendar for public schools could be, and, and school districts generally adopt that calendar, at least in terms of the vacation weeks, um, and, uh, major holidays. There is some variation, but generally speaking, most schools in Rhode Island have, you know, that February break around the same week, and an April break around the same week, and take the same number of days generally for, you know, the Christmas, uh, break. So, um, so, a lot of the superintendents have reported back that their school committees were interested in moving because of what they heard from parents and constituents, uh, staff in, in the community, that they would be, there's an interest out there in moving to a one-week-off format in the spring. So instead of a February break, the break would only be in April, and in February, there would be a four-day, uh, break for students. So, for instance, a professional day would be placed on the Friday of, uh, the President's Day holiday, so the students would still get a four-day break, um, the staff would have a three-day break on, on that particular week. Um, and there were a number of reasons that came forward to that. When I first started as assistant superintendent five and six years ago, I was, uh, nominated somehow to lead two calendar committees, uh, in two, two years, uh, back-to-back, and, and that was, uh, something a lot of people wanted then, um, and, um, so, in, uh, as I mentioned, the superintendent said their school committees are interested in it, but they're interested if everyone else goes with them, because they see that as significant. And so this was the first year that the Superintendent's Association published a recommended calendar with one vacation week, and that week would be, um, roughly the third week of April. And the reason that week is chosen is that seven or eight years ago, there was a resolution from the state legislature asking school departments in the state to use that week as a vacation week to be consistent with Massachusetts and their Patriot's Day holiday. I don't know exactly why they wanted to do it that way, but they did, and ever since, the Superintendent's Association has been, um, honoring that particular week. So, um, we, anticipating that we'd be having this discussion in early winter, we, um, polled, um, our community and got approximately nine hundred and ninety-three or so results, um, overall, um, responses to the question of would you prefer, you know, one semester, um, vacation in April, or two semester vacations, what we traditionally do in February and April? Of the parents polled, about seven hundred and thirty-two were polled, um, five hundred and, or seventy percent of parents would prefer one, uh, week in April instead of the two-week format. Of the staff, it was forty-nine percent, um, looking at the one-week format, and fifty-one percent, um, looking at the two-week format, preferring the two-week format, so pretty much, uh, even there. And overall, that turned out to be about sixty-three percent of total respondents, um, were interested in the one-week format instead of two-week format. Uh, upon that recommendation, a number of people, or that survey, a number of people emailed me, uh, enough so to me and the, and the committee, that they were also interested in the question of beginning before or after Labor Day, uh, and they would request, they requested a poll of the community on that issue as well. So we did that, um, of the, uh, that was about a little over, almost eleven hundred people responded to that particular survey. Of the parents who responded, or those who identified as parents, um, after Labor Day was seventy-six percent, and before Labor Day was twenty-four percent for preference. Of the staff, uh, similar numbers, um, sixty-seven percent after Labor Day and thirty-three percent before Labor Day. So overall, uh, everyone in, seventy-three percent of respondents would prefer to begin school, no matter what the conditions, you know, when you would end, um, or how many vacation weeks, for instance, um, would prefer after Labor Day, seventy-three percent, and before Labor Day, twenty-seven percent. So that's how the results came out. This is not an issue that I personally, um, have a, a big, um, preference, one way or the other. Um, I, I have heard a number of people come to the mic already, um, and email me about particular issues, um, the length of the summer, for instance. I just want to remind, you know, the, the week, um, off issue may play into the size of the summer by about three days or so, um, but that's about it. Um, there'll still be a hundred and eighty school days, and there'll still be, uh, approximately four professional days. So, you know, that piece hasn't changed, it's just when we have them that changes. And, um, clearly, there's a preference for a one semester format. So, to get the conversation started, um, I have put together a proposal, and the school And clearly, there's a preference for a one semester format. So to get the conversation started, I have put together a proposal and the school committee has the actual calendar in front of them. I don't want to publish a calendar, even in a draft form, because that can be confusing down the road. A lot of people say, are we going with the one that you sent as a draft or are we going with the one that you sent later on? And everyone starts to get a little bit confused. But the choice that I am recommending tonight is based on, you know, this, these surveys and what the community has expressed. And that is to begin school the day after Labor Day for students, have two professional days this year upfront for staff, which would happen before the Labor Day weekend. The, as I mentioned, in February, on the twelfth of February, there would be, which is a Friday, there will be a professional day and on the fifteenth is President's Day. So that would make a four-day weekend for students. In April, the vacation week would be beginning on April eighteenth. And this would mean that the school year ends, Labor Day begins kind of late this year, so it would end on June fourteenth. And that would probably be the latest or around the latest date that we would end because Labor Day is so late. So we're starting a little bit later and ending around mid-June, which people feel comfortable with. One of the reasons this whole conversation got started was we had a few years in a row, hurricanes were occurring, major snowstorms, and we had major periods of time where we've been out of school. I think in my first three years of school as superintendent, there was an average of about four or five days off a year because of those events. And so a number of school districts were getting dangerously close to the end of June, going right into that last week of June. And that starts to affect all of the contracts that we have with our employees and we just cannot go beyond July one. So now, when that happens, you have to start scaling back and predicting in the spring, okay, now we're going to midstream announce that we're going to take days off of the April break, which doesn't make anybody happy and it's not the way you want to operate. So this was out of an attempt to kind of rein that in a little bit and end school approximately, you know, mid-June and not late June. And also because, you know, the buildings get hot and it can affect the learning of the students to be, you know, in the building at that time of year, particularly if you happen to have a hot June. So that's the information that I have in front of you.
The days are mandatory and it has to be before July first.
Yes, a hundred and eighty days are still happening. That is mandatory, nothing has affected that here. I think some people are feeling like we're extending the summer, not necessarily, well, I guess it could be a little interpreted that way because there's a little bit less vacation time in the year. But there's still a hundred and eighty school days and that would mean a hundred and eighty-five days that are not school days in the course of any given year.
Thank you, Dr. Ojai. We're going to move into citizens' comments. I just want to remind the community, reiterate what Dr. Ojai said, there will not be a vote by the committee on this this evening, there will be no vote taken. And process-wise, probably having this agenda right on at least one more time for discussion and for community feedback and comments. And then probably the second time after that, we'll actually hopefully get to a vote at that point, once we feel that everyone's had an opportunity to vent this and go through the Q and A process. And if memory serves me correct, I think we're required by right to have a calendar to them by May. Our 2015-16 calendar has to be submitted to the Department of Ed by May, so we still obviously have plenty of time for that, to put this on a few more agendas if people would like to speak to it. So, sorry for the delay, moving into citizens' comments. Tara Chase. Tara Chase?
You have to come to the microphone so the people of North Kingstown can hear you. And all over the world wide web, far reaches of the earth.
And the second and only other speaker is Jennifer Huskins? I'm sorry, if you wanted to.
I guess what I'd like to say is that I love how Dr. Mancieri, right away, spoke to her study being driven by what's best for the students. And I guess what I would like to ask is what part of this calendar decision or the survey that was put forth was driven by finding out what is best for the students? There was three questions, all of a sudden, on the survey with no room for comment and nothing about student learning. And that was it. I set that aside for a while, knowing that there was going to be so many comments and I would be able to give priorities and talk about what I might feel as one parent. And I opened it up and there was three questions and that was that. And the same with the Labor Day. And now here we are with the recommendation. And, you know, I have all sorts of personal experiences, why I feel like one vacation after quite a long winter at the end of April does not serve students the best. That's my, you know, that's mine, you don't need to sit here and listen to that because everybody has different opinions, but I think we need to get to what is best for the students. A little thing is that in elementary school, day after day after day, students don't get to go outside because it's too cold supposedly, but that's the rule. And now this one break for them to be outside maybe, or just have a break, is taken away. I think there's so many issues that I just want to know if they've been looked at. If they've been looked at and there's studies and there's support of this from a student point of view, then I would love to hear it and then it'll be easy for me to accept. But that's, that's my question. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to answer your question, you know, in this particular series of events just this fall, I have not necessarily looked at any particular studies. I, you know, judging from the number of people who have weighed in on this from various communities, number of superintendents with PhDs in education, I haven't gotten a sense so much that people are feeling that the adjustment of a couple of days, and that's really what we're talking about, about three days, one way or the other, would have that significant an effect. I had, we had someone come to the mic recently and talk about it's a good way to kind of clear the building of like if there's a flu epidemic going around and you kind of get a chance to do a cleaning of the building or so and get rid of that and kids go home and they're not necessarily with, you know, so many kids in one room all the time. And there may be some truth to that, but right now, we're dealing with a significant outbreak of the flu and we're just back from Christmas vacation. So I'm not so sure if that's what people would like to believe and necessarily always the truth. So, you know, I agree with you and I, you know, want to, you know, proceed with, you know, the best research in mind. I don't know if the research is necessarily conclusive, one way or the other here, I haven't heard of it if it is, but I do believe there's also a place in a public school and a public school community for the public to weigh in and to talk about what, you know, they would prefer from their community school. And so part of this is kind of honoring that process. That doesn't mean I would always just say, I'm going to recommend whatever, you know, the most people tend to want, whether they are truly informed or not. But I think in this case, I'm not seeing a significant, no one has presented me with information that says definitely this is something that is going to hurt students in any kind of a significant way.
Yeah, thanks. Just very quickly, just wanted to reiterate, you're still looking at a four-day weekend during that February portion of the year. And again, as Dr. Ojai had said, he doesn't have a preference. I don't believe any of the committee members really have a preference. I think what's driving this is for the past several years, questions, comments, emails from parents, students, teachers, community. So we feel as though that we're doing our due diligence in answering to the concerns that have been raised and the ideas that have been raised by the community. And ultimately, hopefully, a decision is made based on that community feedback because personally, I don't care if we have the February vacation week or not, you know, I'm just, I'm going to listen to the constituents and I'm going to listen to the recommendations. So, like I said, no vote on this this evening. Let's finish.
All right, just Dr. J, there's already public schools that have gone to this, right? Cumberland, so we have an ability to learn from them as well.
Yes, I'm aware of Cumberland, Smithfield and Forster-Glosser have all gone to this. And there are a number of communities right now having the same conversation we're having. I just had a call just a few days ago from Barrington and they were also having this discussion with their committee. And just from the superintendent's sessions that I attend, I know a number of districts are having the discussion. So it wouldn't surprise me if by the end of this year, there's probably half of the school districts in Rhode Island are at that point.
Tara, I'm going to let, I'm going to let Jennifer go first because she's been, okay. Good, you take one more quick minute, please.
So I guess my question then is, is there any possibility, and I'm asking this more because I've been told no, but just for people to hear, of moving the break so it's not at the end of April, when kids come back at the end of April and to some extent, they're on, they're cruising towards summer. I mean, can the break be at a more reasonable time that separates the parts of the year like March?
The, I can, right, right. The, there's two factors driving that decision and if these two factors weren't a part of it, I'd probably prefer a March break. The problem is, all of our park testing takes place in March, so it would disrupt that whole process. And so the thinking is, let's get through the testing and then take a break. I, you know, I would prefer the break still to be a little earlier in April with that in mind, but as I mentioned, there's this state resolution thing about staying consistent with Massachusetts on that. So that's, that's why this state calendar was listed as it is. And if other districts are going with that week in mind, I think there's a preference on behalf of a lot of staff, for instance, to want to be consistent if they happen to have kids in another school district, that sort of thing. So there's some comfort in that, doing it together. So that's why that particular week was chosen, but I too would have preferred something more toward the middle.
Thank you. Jennifer? Thank you, Tara.
I agree with all her comments regarding the school. My husband teaches in Providence, so for me, if you move it and then we lose the February, we can't take vacations anymore. So, and if you move the April, we can't take it, but I do agree that that April break is so late that the kids are going to be so burnt out by the time you get to that April break. And then, like you said, once you get back for it, they're done, they're cruising for summer and that's going to be it. I do understand the snow issue and closing, I have to close my office when it snows. So Cumberland, Smithfield, they get more snow. That's probably why they adopted it. I work in Connecticut, up near Hartford as well, I have an office there and they, most of the towns there have gone to that, but they have a March break, not an April break or not an end of April break, it's a week earlier than ours. That's, so my biggest concern is that when you have, I have friends who are both teachers in other districts and if their kids are here and you adopt it and Providence doesn't, now what do we do? So you're right, if the whole state goes, I can see doing something, but if it doesn't, I think people are really strapped.
This is the type of issue that I would prefer a state mandate, to tell you the truth.
I agree.
For everyone to just be together and have it dictated to us. Unfortunately, I'm not even sure all the powers that be about why it isn't that way, but it isn't that way. It's left to local control. And so you have these periods where everyone's kind of unsure where they're going to move.
I would like to know the absenteeism too, for the rest of those days at those schools because.
I've heard from.
I have a timeshare in Colorado, so I can tell you, I will be pulling my kids home.
Well, our former superintendent Phil Thornton in Cumberland has already had this for a year and he said that there is not a significant problem with absenteeism that he's noticed.
My second item is that we are putting together a big parent group to go to the next town council meeting to try and push forward, Kerry McKay and his group to push forward the full-day kindergarten. I'm wondering if I can meet with someone on the school committee regarding the study that was done. I emailed Joyce Repel to see if I could get Mrs. Lemoine's numbers and her study that she had done so that we can put together a parent side of it. We have already twenty parents that are planning on going to the next town council meeting and we're hoping to get several more.
I had meant to reach out and contact you and email you and I'm sorry I haven't yet, but if you want to contact myself or Dr. Ojai or his secretary and set something up, I'd be more than happy to meet.
Okay, great.
With the parents and the superintendent.
Mrs. King, Dr. Humbert and myself will be making a presentation. I.
It's supposed to be the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay, great. So you're aware of that, good. So that will be the night to come.
Well, I want to come, but I also want, I also, I was at the town council meeting last night and some things were brought up in the comments by, in the scuttlebutt, sort of in the back about where numbers are coming from and things like that. And I just would love to sit down with someone and talk to them, just to tell you what I heard and kind of take it to the town council more from a parent perspective and not just a numbers perspective, because I truly believe it's detrimental to our kids.
Right.
With common core that we're not doing this.
We'll definitely be in touch within the next day or two and hopefully set up a time to get together, but I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to.
Can I make one quick comment? I've said several times that if somebody wanted to speak, to sign up. So we're going to move on from public comment. I'm sorry, I apologize. I think I said it five times, if you want to speak, please sign up. So I'm going to follow that process, it wouldn't be fair to those who did sign up.
Very quickly, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say one thing to a comment that was made is, and it's been mentioned quickly, but we are not making any decisions right now. And I encourage anyone who has an opinion on the topic to come to the next meeting as well and to email us with your opinions because we truly do want to hear. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the, we do have, sorry, got myself a little lost. Moving on to routine items, executive session, disclosure of executive session votes on December ninth, 2014, Mrs. Healy or Mrs. Carroll, do we have any? Ms. Carroll?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In the executive session on December ninth, 2014, the school committee voted five to zero to authorize the chairperson to sign a settlement agreement with the North Kingstown ESP Union. This settlement brings an end to all the litigation and the unfair labor practice that was ongoing with ESP and now allows the North Kingstown School Committee to privatize custodians. That was the only vote that was taken in executive session.
Thank you. And do we need, we need a motion to seal executive session minutes from the, actually, we did not have executive session.
Tonight.
Tonight, so we do not need to address that agenda item. And we do not have any votes to disclose from tonight, again, as we did not have an executive session this evening. Moving into the consent agenda, are there any exemptions at this time from tonight's consent agenda? Mr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Tracy. I'd like to event C1, 2 and 3 and E1.
Okay, are there any others? I can't see.
I'm all set, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the non-exempted consent items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries three, zero. Moving into the exempted items, C1, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I'd like to start by making a motion to approve C1.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight the community, just again, the purchase of these boards and obviously the work that goes on by the parents and the relationship between our administrators, our teachers, our staff and the parents who raise these funds, who do a lot of work behind the scenes that provide, you know, what you might call margins of excellence to help our schools. I would just like the superintendent, maybe not a long discussion, but just again, as we purchase these things, that we're cognizant of keeping up with the maintenance and other items to make sure that they're working correctly on those.
I am all for that, with your support.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second to approve, if there's no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries three, zero. C2, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. Motion to approve C2.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
Thank you. I would just like two comments. One, it's a significant number of educators going and that's probably a good thing, but I would like the superintendent, one, to maybe just talk, or Dr. Humbert, discuss briefly the purpose of this and what professional development gains will be made and also request from the superintendent and assistant superintendent that we perhaps get some feedback from that development thing so we understand how we're, again, moving ourselves to leverage all this technology that we're rapidly acquiring.
So, you're basically looking for a report out after this?
Yeah, it's a brief summary and maybe Dr. Humbert can take a minute now and just explain, you know, for the community what's going on.
So, we are fortunate to have this summit come to our area. These are oftentimes done regionally and so it's not often that it comes close to us and this particular summit is offered on a weekend, the end of February, beginning of March, a Saturday and a Sunday, and it's going to be hosted at Coventry High School. So, we're fortunate that it's close enough and we have interest of many educators, 26 educators, that would like to avail themselves of this opportunity. We are trying to give people the opportunity to become familiar and skilled at the Google applications because when the teachers get the, and staff members get the Chromebooks for our next school year, we would like to have a cadre of teachers that are familiar with using the Google format, which is what will be our principal use with the Chromebooks.
Thank you, Dr. Humbert. Okay, if there's no further discussion, we have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Moving on to C3, Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A motion to approve C3?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Discussion?
Thank you. Again, if I could indulge Superintendent or Mrs. King to briefly highlight to the community what this item is about. Members of the community may have seen headlines in the paper, I think about a month ago, about East Greenwich doing something similar and saving a lot of money on electricity. And so, those who were inquiring whether North Kingstown was doing the same. And again, to highlight the work done by the administrations to continually seek out efficiencies where we can. And so, maybe Mrs. King can talk just a minute about what this is about.
Well, we have been working with National Grid on and off. I think everybody knows when they pay their electric bill every month, you're paying into the National Grid Electric Reserve, whatever it is they want to call it. And grid is required to find public buildings that can get some sort of influx of funding to become 20% more efficient in electrical savings. So, when we've been meeting with National Grid, the first thing that they really want to do is our outdoor lighting and that's going to really help everywhere. I don't think we've done outdoor lighting in this district in a long time. So, that's going to help with security purposes and really upgrade that. But three buildings that they're really focusing on right now would be Davisville Middle School, Wickford Middle School, and Fishing Cove. And if they can help us with some of the lighting funding that we need from this reserve, those three schools, we just recently had new boilers put in, so changing the lighting is also going to help with some more efficiency, making that, those three buildings more energy efficient. They are, we are working with grid also. They are going to look at the rest of our buildings and also partner with us on any of the upgrades that we're doing to the HVAC system at the high school as well because there'll be incentives offered there as well. But the basics of this plan right now would be upgrade all the lighting and all, outdoor lighting in all of our buildings, the indoor lighting at those three schools. National Grid can offer us incentive monies of $149,000 for the project. And then, our portion, the school's portion, is $222,000. But the reason why we can do this work now is because grid also has a program that's called on-bill financing. So, these projections that we have for doing all this work is going to save us about $51, $5200 per month in electricity savings. From there, we will pay back our $222,000 for the project. So, the return on investment is three to five years on lighting that is estimated to be good for 10 to 15 years. So, it's really, this on-bill financing is really relatively new and it's very helpful to districts. So, we do not have to write a check for $222,000. We're doing it all through on-bill financing and it's a great way to partner with National Grid to upgrade our buildings and get some energy efficiency.
Thank you, Mrs. King.
And just to highlight, Mrs. King, so, and then after the return on investment period ends, the additional savings will be accruing to the district.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. So, after that three-to-five-year return on investment, we've paid back the $222,000. You know, the increased savings that we have for electricity comes right to the district, falls right to our bottom line.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Any other questions?
I just want to comment. I'm a new member of the Facility Subcommittee and this was endorsed by the Facility Subcommittee. And if I can sum it up and tell me if I get this wrong, Mrs. King, but it's a typical situation where you have to spend some money to save money, but in this case, we get to save money without actually fronting or spending the money because we're getting it back, we're getting, we're paying for it with the savings as we go along, correct?
That's right, and that's what's so great. It really is, it's a complete partnership with National Grid because they are kicking in some money of their own funding and also allowing us to borrow this money on bill financing. So, it really is a very good partnership.
And everybody loves the electric company, right?
But everybody, we're getting some of that money back. Thank you very much.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, we've had a motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Moving on, I believe E1, what's, E1, Echo 1 was the last exempted item.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. I guess I will make a motion to approve E1 with the reservation, there was some discussion of minor edits and changes with Dr. Rogé and Dr. Manziri. I don't think they significantly changed the program of studies in any substantive way. I think they just clarified and add a link or something. So, I just wanted to be clear that whether we approving it with those minor edits, and I don't know if the committee had a chance to read those, but again, I don't think they were, you know, not cutting whole classes or adding significant stuff.
Be rough on the math department, we apologize, but no, nothing's that substantial. So, those edits are fine, no problem here.
Okay. So, I make a motion to approve E1?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Moving into, thank you, Dr. Manziri. Moving into unfinished business, school committee approval of new facility Subcommittee member. We had a vacancy on our Facility Subcommittee for a community member. Mrs. King, help me out here, I think we advertised in the local paper, if you want to take it from here.
We did. We advertised on December 11th in the Standard Times, posting that it was open until December 29th for people to apply for the Facility Subcommittee. Mr. Mark Plimpton is no longer available for our committee and I would like to publicly thank him for the time that he has spent on the committee. I've worked with him over the last couple of years. We will miss his expertise and his knowledge. He really did give a lot of time to the district. So, we asked in that posting for people who were interested in being on the committee. We had one response and that was actually from Mr. John Biscarton, who, as we know, is a former school committee member. And during his last several months as a school committee member, last year actually, I think, he was actually on the Facility Subcommittee. He has expressed interest in being on the Facility Subcommittee as a citizen and also someone who is owner and operator of his own general contracting business. And Mr. Biscarton has been a valuable resource over that past year to the committee and we would hope that we'd be able to appoint him to that group.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Is there a motion at this time to appoint Mr. John Biscarton as a member of the facilities, a community member of the Facility Subcommittee? So moved? There a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. And thank you to John for applying and being willing to continue to stay on board. Moving on to 5B, appointment of long-term planning task force members and approval of committee charge. I believe at our last meeting, the superintendent reviewed the draft of the charge and the draft of the, the makeup of the planning task force. I don't know if you had any updates on that from the last time?
Yeah, I, you know, very briefly, the task force is looking at, you know, long-term planning for the district, mainly in terms of, you know, buildings and properties and, you know, long-term projections for enrollment and that sort of thing. And so, I've recommended a number of people, some from the towns, from the school department, to kind of have a joint venture. I would also like to amend that proposal a little bit. After talking with Mr. Dubois, I would like to extend an invitation from a member of the staff, whether it be a teacher or an ESP employee, someone not necessarily from the leadership of the unions, it's not that kind of a thing, but someone who may have an interest in representing that side of things to be a part of these discussions without making the committee, you know, too large and unwieldy, so.
So, well, certainly, we can approve the draft charge this evening and we could certainly look for the NEA to forward a name onto the school committee, a recommendation onto the school committee. And at a later date, the school committee will take that appointment up for, appointment of that individual to this Subcommittee up for a vote. I believe at this time, we, the committee, we need to name one additional school committee member to this Subcommittee, is that correct, Dr. Rogé? I know Mr. Jones has expressed interest. I don't know if there's any, if there's a motion to appoint Mr. Jones as the school committee, the second school committee representative to this Subcommittee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Jones to the long-term planning task force.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And if I remember correctly, Dr. Rogé, the other, the other members are myself, yourself, and Mrs. King?
Mrs. King, Mr. Embry, Town Manager, Phil Bergeron, whose title is Director of...
Public Works.
Public Works. And Mr. Jim Grundy, the head of our Facility Subcommittee, and Briarly Mellor, who is the Vice President of the Facility Subcommittee.
We also have Council President McKay?
Yes, and Council President McKay and one other member from the committee. On the 29th, when we make our full-day K presentation, I will also be presenting this idea to them and asking them to appoint a second member.
On the 26th.
Sorry, 26th.
Great. So, by approving this motion, we're basically approving all in one motion, the charge and the appointment of Mr. Jones. If there are no objections, I could break it out into two separate motions, but there are no objections, we can just do this in one motion.
That's fine.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the charge and Mr. Jones being named as a representative to this Subcommittee in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. Moving on to Item C, Policies, Policy BEA-R, the 15-16 schedule of school committee meetings. Mr. Blastball, did you want to speak to this?
No.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not really sure that, Mrs. Healy, really, did we have any changes with this or is this just the formality that we approved this, this school committee meeting calendar?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so could I have a motion at this time to approve Item C1?
A motion to approve Policy BEA-R, 2015-2016 scheduled school committee meetings.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. New business? We don't have any new business at this time. Reports, correspondence? I don't know if anybody has anything before we adjourn.
May I make a comment on correspondence? I know it's not in here. I discussed with the superintendent, the RYE currently has opened for public comment about their dual enrollment policy. I know it's too late for us as a committee to do anything and I assume the superintendent through himself and organizations will be perhaps providing comment. I'd just like to make the public aware of that, dual enrollments becoming a more increasing topic. Some of the changes RYE are proposing are not insignificant potentially in terms of impacts on schools, perhaps exciting opportunity too, but if you want to have comment on education, you are free to email the Commissioner and provide your thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Anyone else? Questions? Comments? Alloys? Anything? No? Recognition? Thank you, Dr. Humbert.
We did have the 2015 North Kingstown High School Scholastic Art Award winners, so we wanted to congratulate them. There were several from the high school who achieved this award.
Thank you. Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn at this time.
A motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries three, zero. We are adjourned.
Thank you.